Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our agenda is the open forum. Dan, do we have anybody signed up? The first one is Jerry Grunder. This has to do with the workshop for the... You want to wait until that workshop happens? Okay. Eugene Hurstel. He has two things about the garbage, so please come forward.
Hi. Eugene Hurstel, 10234 204th Street North, Forest Lake. I just have a question about the... Does... In the contract, does Republic pick up oil?
No, they do not.
They won't be picking up the oil? Okay. I guess then, I would like to say just... And I know that the contract is like five years or whatever. That maybe in the next one, hopefully, maybe a couple different garbage companies could be looked at, maybe, to serve the city. And I know it's a long ways off or whatever, but I like some of the stuff that Walters has done and being a good company and everything like that, that maybe that'd be an option. The other one I have is how do I go about filing a complaint against a construction company that did some work on my house? Maybe Mr. Casey? As far with the... Do I file a...
I don't know off the top of my head.
With a building permit or with the building department?
Yeah, I'm not sure if the city is the agency to enforce complaints about poor workmanship. I'll have to get back to you really.
I think you're going to go into the Department of Labor.
Department of Labor? Okay, because then I can file with the Trade Commission and the Better Business Bureau? Okay. But I think it would be good to know that maybe there is a problem with one of them that does get their permits here in Forest or has gotten permits in Forest Lake and hasn't been able to follow through.
You can always send us a note or a letter or an email and just to informing us of what happened, but I don't believe we... As long as they've been inspected or have their permits, they're allowed to operate. But I think that some kind of a notification may just give us a little bit more closer look at what some of the things that they do.
Yeah. I've had some trouble with Advantage Construction, so that's why I thought it may be. See what my options are. Okay? Well, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Next gentleman is Joe Johnson. Wants to talk about the tobacco ordinance.
Hi there. Thank you. Yeah, so Joe Johnson, it's... We live at 20320 Fenway Avenue North. And I wanted to speak... I was actually contacted by the Juul Corporation. They make the small vape pens that's a smoking cessation for adults. And I think the unintended consequence is that they sometimes end up in the hands of teenagers. Last year about this time, I was struck down by a massive widowmaker heart attack. And I spent the largest part of last year back and forth on operating tables and in and out of surgeries and in and out of hospitals. And the one conclusion and the one consensus of the doctors is that my wife and I had to quit smoking. That was the biggest thing. At 42 and you're laying there nearly dead, they gave me less than a 6% chance of survival. And we had to quit. And so, following that, what we did is we went through medications. We tried different options. We looked for ways after 25 years to try and finally kick the habit. And with the prescribed medications, the emotional side effects and the, you know, the side effects that come along with those medications didn't work. And eventually, I swung into Motomart and they had a $15 off Juul sign. And I said, screw it, let's try it. Let's see what happens. And we did. And it's worked. And it's worked amazingly well for my wife and I both to quit smoking. And at that time, there was berry flavored and mango and bubble gum and all of these different flavors we could choose from. And Juul actually stripped all of those flavors away voluntarily and left only mint and menthol and tobacco. And that's the three that are left. And I think the consideration on the table is taking even those away in the hopes of staving off these teenagers. But I can tell you, when I was a teenager, it was a long time ago, but I started smoking Pall Mall and King Chesterfield and some of the nastiest, grossest cigarettes that were available because that's what my parents and my grandparents had. That's what was available to us and that's what we used. And the more they tried to knock it out of our hand and dissuade us, the more we tried to reach out for it and pursue it. It had absolutely nothing to do with flavor. And so, I think what it comes down to, at least for myself and my family and our home here in town, is that if there are three flavors with the mint, the menthol, and the tobacco, the kids are going to find a way. And if we make that two flavors, they're going to find a way. And if we strip it down to just one choice, they're going to find a way. Now, I do have two teenagers in school here. And the feedback I get from them is that the sweeping majority of the kids aren't taking the standard, traditional stuff off the gas station shelves. They're going online. And they're making smores flavors and bubble gum flavors and all kinds of concoctions that I would have never even thought of, right? For their parties and for the things that they're doing. And that they have very little interest in these traditional, really mundane flavors. And so, I just want, at least on the consideration on the table, that there are people in the community, and there are millions across the country, that for them, Juul is the only product that works. And it works quite effectively. And when it comes to convenience stores like Motomart, it's not laborious decisions. You go in there and take what's available. And so, if mint is available, they might take that. And if menthol is available, they might take that. And if tobacco is the only thing available, that's what they're going to take. But for families like my own, if I go in there and those options are stripped away from us and you're standing in there and your split-second impulse buy decision, there's a better chance I'm going to walk out of there with a pack of cigarettes. And so, for the absolute basic flavors that are made available to us and the fact that most kids aren't using those or going there to pursue that anyway, I would ask, at least for consideration, that there are a lot of people like myself that are using it to quit smoking and to put less smoke and less ashes and less cigarette butts in the intersections here by using that product. And I would ask that that not be stripped away from us because it is doing profound things for a lot of us. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Dave Madison?
Oh, please, Mr. Grand. I'm on the consent agenda.
Okay. Was there something you wanted to say about it? I mean...
No.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Dave. Michael Keen, Night Out?
Good evening. Michael Keen, S.A.L. Commander, Forest Lake American Legion. I want to just thank everyone for National Night Out, Night to Unite, whatever you call it. The police department showed up, the American Legion. We had roughly 200 people there that night. We had a really good showing. Fire Chief Al Newman showed up, brought in a truck and a bunch of firefighters, and we had police officers there. And, I mean, I personally served up over 175 root beer floats. They had almost 200 hot dogs that they served up. They had... We had face painting. We had clowns doing balloons. We had a puppet show. It was just great. But anyway, thank you for... And the paramedics, for everyone that showed up that night to put that show on. And I know it wasn't just at the American Legion, it was all over the city. You know, Columbus, Forest Lake. So, anyway, thank you for those people who showed up to help promote that program. It's very good. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Okay, that was all the people that are listed. Does anyone else want to speak tonight? If not, we'll move on. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull item B.
So you're talking about six B?
Correct. And with that, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A and C through J.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other further comments? All in favor of the motion then?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now, we're on to six B.
I was not present at that meeting, so I will need to abstain.
Okay.
I had to leave that meeting early for an emergency, so I can't vote on that item either.
Acting Mayor, members of the council, if you aren't at the meeting, you are certainly welcome to abstain from voting on the minutes. You can vote to approve the minutes even though you weren't at... Present at the meeting. However, if no one is comfortable with that, if the motion were to be to approve the meeting minutes and there's a 2-2 vote, which I'm sensing could be the path, that would essentially not allow the minutes to be adopted, so that motion would fail. So if it's considered that two of you would like to abstain from voting, you may wish to consider continuing that agenda item to next month's meeting so that there would be potentially three votes in the affirmative to pass and adopt those meeting minutes.
I mean, I'm comfortable voting for it. I had to leave just a few minutes early before it ended, so I could, as long as...
Then I entertain a motion to such...
I make a motion to delay the six B till the next meeting when we will have a full quorum. We'll have all five.
I'll second the motion then. Any other further comment? So we're going to push it off to the next meeting?
I thought Member Monson said she was going to vote. She was willing to vote.
I'm comfortable voting unless you want to push it off. That's fine.
Before you said you weren't comfortable voting. You're my hearing check.
I was trying to kick you under the table.
If you want to withdraw your motion, I'll withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And so moved. I'll withdraw my second. So go ahead, Kelly.
I would make a motion to approve six B as presented.
I'll second that. Any further comment? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Want abstaining? Okay. Move on. Now, we're on to the regular agenda, seven A, which is Resolution 08261901, the donation from Richard Lee and Barbara Jean Olson for $1,575 to purchase Stat-X fire suppression equipment.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 0812-19-02.
01.
Excuse me. 01.
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Excuse me. Master Mayor, is... Are they here? The Olsons here by chance?
They're not here.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thanks to them.
Yes.
We have a very generous community.
Seven B is an item. It's the approval of Minnesota Air Nocs Grant Project. And Dan, could you give us a little bit of insight into that?
Yep, absolutely. Acting Mayor, members of the council, what you have before you tonight are the... There's two projects that the Airport Commission has recommended for approval for submission to MinDOT Aeronautics for the fiscal year 2020 grant cycle. This year, we submitted actually a total of three projects to the state and received notice in the end of, I believe it was the end of July, early August, that we were greenlit for two of those projects. A maintenance project for the new paved runway and taxiway, so a seal coating and crack filling out for those two areas, as well as an update to the airport's master plan. So when we submitted these projects, they go into a group bucket, MinDOT Aeronautics reviews them all. It's compete... We compete against other airport projects across the state. And they... When they greenlight a project, what that means is they have money reserved within their budget for the project. And then, once we perform all the costing, get the true cost of that project, we then submit it. And then, they do... Will allocate the funds to a project. So at this point, what's before you is kind of the scopes. It'll go through the two projects that we're looking at doing. Both of these projects have been talked about at the Airport Commission level for quite a long time. The CIP projects that we're working on at the Airport Commission level are focusing on maintenance activities for the new paved runway. We want to make sure that we're doing those maintenance activities to allow us to get maximal usage out of the runway. The master plan update is also... It was a... It's needed at this point because the original master plan that was done out there, we basically have fully built that out at this point. So if we're looking at doing any type of expansion, any type of additional hangars out there, we do need to do a master plan update. So it's a pretty extensive planning document for the airport with a look at current usage, how many hangars are out there, to look at forecast projections for what they anticipate use will be over a certain time period. And then, look at what type of projects you'll need to maximize uses out there and also identify areas where, you know, if we're going to do a hangar extension, they'll actually lay out what areas you can use for those future hangars out at the airport. It's approximately a 12 to 15-month project from start to finish on the master plan update. Again, it's a pretty fairly involved project. And at this point, the airport needs it if it's going to do any type of expansion, any type of growth into the future. We've basically built out our existing master plan. So we submitted both those projects. MinDOT did give us the green light on both those projects. Unique this year is that the state portion of it is 95% of the fund... Project will be funded from the state and 5% local match. It's pretty good when you look at the numbers of local match percentage versus state match percentage. Typically, they're anywhere between 90-10, 80-20, so 95-5 is pretty much unheard of. So we're pretty excited about the 95-5. These are reimbursement grants, so meaning that the city spends the funds first and then they get reimbursed for those. I have asked Silas, who's the airport engineer, to provide kind of an estimated when the bills would come forward for that so we can make sure that we can get those into our cash flow so we're not just getting hit with these massive bills. So we did get those through. They are into our cash flow projections. When all of a sudden done, the local match for these projects will come out of the airport fund, so it'll be coming out of the airport fund for the local match of that. The recommendation at this point would be to approve the two products, project scopes that you have presented tonight. Bolton and Mink will then start doing kind of that next level dive to get those numbers assembled. And we'll do the submissions to MinDOT so we can get the grant agreements with MinDOT back. So at this point, be happy to answer any questions you have on the two projects that are before you.
Appreciate it, Dan. Thank you. It's not often you can get 95% money for anything. And basically, just to add to it a little bit, I mean, these are projects that, you know, after a certain number of years, even on a new runway, there are certain maintenance things you got to do, otherwise you're spending more money later. So it's a matter of getting it done and getting it done right. And the new airport master plan is a big thing too because we're trying to actually find room for another nine or 10 hangars out there because there's a big demand for them. And right now, we can't do that until that's all set up. And with the master plan, then MinDOT will be looking at funding the infrastructure for that, so. Anybody else have any questions or comments about that?
No. So just... I just had a kind of a question on the funding on the master plan. Once the master plan is complete, there'll be some alignment of resources according to what you've said in the memo here, so a plan for funding these activities. Is that something then we currently wrap into the budget? Or you mentioned something about MinDOT, potentially some MinDOT funding?
Well, that would be...
Or is that just the runway? The runway improvement?
Yeah. So my understanding with the master plan, so let's just say they identify you need to do, say, 15 hangars on the northbound, for example. You could... They'll look at what the project would scope to get infrastructure up to support that. And they'll say, this will cost you X amount of dollars, and then we can put that into the airport's CIP for inclusion into MinDOT. Because MinDOT likes to see a 20-year CIP for their budget cycles. So they want to see those 20-year-old project projections. And this master plan allows you then to say, you know, we're looking at current use, future use. This project is probably a 12-year-old project. We can slot that into year 12 and then get that into the CIP project. So MinDOT can then look at their future budgets. So when they go to the state for their annual allotment, they can say in 2040, we're going to do a big expansion in Forest Lake.
So there's some potential for a MinDOT share at some point along that...
Correct.
Pathway as well? Okay.
Yeah. And the nice thing as well with this, they work... We work with MinDOT Aeronautics on this, and so they're aware of kind of, you know, they work hand-in-hand with them, so they kind of know where we currently are, where we're going to go. So again, it's a good alignment of what we want to do with what they can do from a resource perspective so we make sure that we're, you know, if we have a big project coming down the pipeline, that they can get their funding mechanisms in place too so they'll have funding available, hopefully, when we're ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah, you got to get the wish list done first.
Yeah, right.
That's what it amounts to.
Yeah. My only other question was related to cash flow, so you've kind of answered that question for me. So it's a lot upfront, but it's really a good deal for us.
You got to do it by the numbers. That's what it amounts to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments for Dan? I entertain a motion to... For these considerations?
I move approval of the project scope for the master plan update. We'll do this in two phases, right?
Okay. That's fine.
I'll second that.
Any further comments? All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. There's one more then?
I move approval of the project scope for the pavement maintenance project.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
I think just one final comment on my end. Thank you, Dan, for this. I know we've, you know, we haven't been paying as much attention to the airport as we've needed to. And since you've, you know, kind of taken the lead in making sure this work is getting done, it's clearly, you know, starting to move. So I appreciate that.
It's the fact that he can explain it, too. Appreciate that, Dan, very much.
Quite the education of MinDOT Aeronautics.
Okay. We're up to number seven C, the tobacco ordinance, number 691. I'm sure everybody's been hashing this thing over for the last past couple of months. And we have a couple of different options here tonight.
Are you going to walk us through, Dan?
I can. I can kind of walk you through just kind of how everything kind of landed, so.
Sure. Thanks, Dan.
Based on kind of the feedback that the last council meeting brought draft ordinance and A draft ordinance, which had Tobacco 21 language included in it, kind of went through it section by section, got comments back from council and after the public hearing as well, kind of what wanted to be included in there. We kind of took that information back and then compiled the final versions of the ordinances, which you see before you tonight. There was a request for two ordinances, one that kept the age of sale at 18 and one that raised it up to 21. So to try to keep it as straightforward as possible, because a lot of the language overlaps, we created version 691-A from a record-keeping perspective so we can keep it clear. 691-A keeps the minimum age at 18. 691-B raises it to 21. Outside of that language, most of the other language that's included in there is pretty much the same in each ordinance revision. So all the other licensing changes that were requested are included in both versions. It's just the language raising the age of sale. That being said, I just wanted to kind of highlight just a couple of the things that we discussed at the last meeting and kind of, if you're wondering where something is or where it landed, it's going to draw a couple of attention, a couple of things. One thing that was discussed during the last meeting was the addition of a flavor ban for vape products and to see if that was a possibility to include in this ordinance revision. We took that back, did do some looking into that to see if that is possible. And upon looking at that, the recommendation was to hold and keep it out of this revision for one main reason is that typically, when you pass a flavor ban, the adoption date is delayed just to offer retailers to adjust inventory stock to get their suppliers to... So you have a product that would say legal on Monday, no, it's not legal on Tuesday. They then know they can phase these products out and kind of get different supplies in. Typically, you're looking at 90 days, you know, minimum for a delayed adoption. And just with all the other licensing changes and language changes in here, we didn't want to feel probably was the right time to do a 90-day delay especially with the moratorium expiring in September. Secondly, was that when we originally released this information out to current license holders, we did not include language on the flavor ban. And considering it's a pretty substantial change, we felt from a transparency perspective it's good to kind of go back, re-release another ordinance update that says there's a flavor ban that's being considered because, again, they would have an opportunity to come to a public hearing and have their comments heard by the council. So based on two, those two topics, staff recommended not pursuing a flavor ban as part of 691's option. However, if council still desires a flavor ban, we can do that as a separate ordinance update after passage of one of the two versions that's included in the packet tonight. Another thing that was discussed was sign requirements. The new language, the new licensing update that's included in the ordinance here had requirements for point-of-sale signage. And there was, as one of the gentlemen pointed out at the public hearing, or the public forum, or, excuse me, the public hearing on it, that we didn't clarify what kind of signers we needed. And we wanted to make sure that was consistent across. So instead of defining all that and trying to go through and say it needs to be a two-by-two sign or a three-by-three sign, the easier approach is for the city just to provide them with an approved sign at the time the license is issued. So we put language in there that says, upon issuance of license, the city will provide you with the proper sign that you need to have at your point-of-sale. So there's no ambiguity. You're given a sign, and then they can purchase additional on their own if they want to, but we are going to give them approved signage to use so there's no confusion as to what signage they need. Another topic that was discussed was the training program and kind of helping to define that a little bit better. We did go back out and we did find three training programs from Washington County. One's from, I believe it's from a federal agency, and one's from a private, to the WeCard organization, as examples that we would use as ones that kind of hit all the points that we had discussed. However, we wanted to allow retailers who have current training programs in place, like a national retailer that kind of has a robust training program in place, to be able to continue to use that training program, but wanted to do some definitions as to what they needed to have as a minimum. So we just put minimum standards in, and you can see those on page 119 of the packet. We did include, if the program meets these standards, they're okay. If the retailer comes in, says, I don't have any idea what I needed to do for a training program, we will give them a sheet that says, here are some examples that you can take back, and you can just model off of these three. Another benefit about having that outside of the ordinance, let's say Washington County gets out of the regulatory business, doesn't have that training program anymore, we don't have to go back into the ordinance to strike that language out. We can just say, we're maintaining a list, we can just update that list. So longer term, this is a kind of cleaner, more elegant solution for keeping that license current. That's kind of some of the things that we... Was we're discussing, we're included in there. All the other, you know, conversations that we had at the last meeting are included. So just to kind of summarize, if the council wishes to keep the minimum age at 18, a motion to adopt ordinance 691-A would be that motion to keep it at 18. If Tobacco 21, raising the age to 21, is desired, passage of 691-B is what's required. And that might be happy to answer any questions you have on the ordinances.
Just to comment on the flavor ban, I fully understand, you know, the direction that we're headed. And I think to your point and to the gentleman's point who spoke this evening, an opportunity to revisit that, allow for public comment again, maybe do a little deeper dive into that is a good idea. So I'm in agreement that we, you know, kind of hold on that for now. So...
How do you define a flavor?
Yeah. And, you know, we'll have to, you know, have additional conversation around that, I think.
Mr. Mayor, Acting Mayor, for purposes of discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 691-B.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Which one are we...
I'm really having a hearing problem tonight.
691... I made a motion to approve ordinance number 691-B, which would raise the minimum age to 21 for tobacco.
Okay. The comment I'd like to make, if no one else is ready, I've been hashing this thing over for two months, looking at these different options and all these things, and talking about the issues we've had in the past with companies that sell vaping equipment, that kind of thing, and hearing about kids getting sick, and one of them dying here not too long ago because of vaping and, and all that, that it took me a long time to make a real solid decision on that, but I do support the motion that you've made, Kelly and I, and I will support it and vote for it. So it's not something that, that I just decided in 10 minutes, it took two months. So personally, I will support it. The other part of this, it says we need a four-fifths majority, so... Anyways, any further discussion in this matter?
Well, I'd just like to make a few comments. Since our last conversation on this issue, actually, the 41st community in the state of Minnesota passed Tobacco 21, and that was the city of Oatana. And, you know, we have cited numerous stats and other evidence-based research over the many conversations we've had, so I don't really feel like we need to rehash that. But in all honesty, Tobacco 21 has very broad public support from youth and adults alike, and that's cited in national surveys. Actually, 75% of surveyed adults, and some of those are current smokers as well. They really see the importance of keeping these products out of the hands of our young people. This policy is really backed by organizations and individuals whose work and perspective is grounded in science, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, and I recognize the letter once again that we received in support of this policy by a Health Partners physician that we discussed at our last meeting. I am a fan of personal choice and personal responsibility. I understand the, if we can go to war and other arguments, though they're not always grounded, in fact. In this case, however, we have an industry that is once again targeting young people, and this is a fact. And, and they're doing so at an extremely vulnerable time in their lives, when their brains are still developing. They're very susceptible to nicotine addiction during this period of time. And we do have a product that is unregulated and with many unknowns. And I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but just yesterday, this article appeared in one of our local newspapers, indicating the first death tied to vaping in the state of Illinois. In Minnesota, we have had four confirmed respiratory cases linked to vaping and another 11 probable cases. And according to the article, the illness appears to be inhalation injuries, with the lungs apparently reacting to some caustic substance. I really feel like we have an obligation and an opportunity to do our part to protect our young people. Yes, that includes things like awareness and education, but it also includes policy change and similar strategies like we're proposing here tonight. Is it perfect? No. There are still communities surrounding us that haven't yet adopted Tobacco 21, and access will still be an issue. Online access will still be an issue. But in addition to the science, this is a values vote for me. It sends a message to our community that we care about the health and well-being of our young people, and I hope that our neighbors to the north, south, east, and west will follow our lead. I've worked with young people for a long time, much of my life, and in pondering this decision, I'm reminded personally of a poster hanging up in our school buildings that read, "What is right isn't always popular, and what is popular isn't always right." This is the right thing to do, and I support adoption of this ordinance as well.
You have a comment I'd like to make, Kathy, if you don't mind, is I think we have an opportunity here to show the state of Minnesota how it's done. We've been waiting and waiting and waiting for this thing, and, and, you know, they could have made our job a lot easier by getting it done. And as far as I'm concerned, I think in some cases for the vendors, especially the vendors that happen to sell alcohol, it's going to make it a lot easier for them. They have one number to work with, and that's it. So was there any further comments?
I... Go ahead, Paul.
You know, I'm not a fan of Tobacco 21 from the standpoint of being able to police the effort. With all of the adjoining communities not having that, I think it makes it very hard to really get an effective saturation where we'll have fewer young people doing it, especially with being able to order online. That being said, I do believe that the health concerns are seen to be multiplying rapidly in this, so I will not oppose this motion.
Yeah, I'd like, I want us to be an example for, and I think, I think the other cities will follow suit. I already do. I started, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to add a few comments that Acting Mayor Husnick said about St. Paul. And there's been a lot of discussion about getting ahead of St. Paul in a state law. And I've worked in state government for the last 11 years, and the partisan politics have what kept this from passing, and we can't let something like that affect the health and well-being of our youth. Minnesota has prided itself on being a locally controlled state. In fact, I know this area has definitely prided itself on that. And this is why I think you're seeing communities come out for this Tobacco 21, because local community knows what's best. They know what's best for their community. And I agree with Council Member Gerard, too, this will be really difficult with the surrounding communities that haven't adopted this, and I actually challenge them to either start the discussion or continue the discussion, because I know that they care about their young people as much as we do here in Forest Lake.
Any further discussion?
No, just, just one comment. It sounds like we're heading this direction. I just wanted to point out, in the T-21 policy on page 13, I think we have an error, or the top of the page, item B, that should read 21 as well, correct? Not 18?
Page 13?
Page 13. Page 138 of the full packet.
Thank you.
Page 13 of the policy. Is that correct? Am I, was that, was that a miss, a miss in the update?
You're talking in section B?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, page 138 of the agenda packet.
Mayor, members of the council, that language reflects the language found in state statute 461.12 subdivision 3, which does reflect the state law, which is sale to under 18 versus sales to under 21.
Okay.
So ultimately, policy decision on behalf of the council, you're focusing here, this language focuses on the penalty that's to be imposed on the clerk who sells the product to someone who is not able to purchase legally that product.
So this is the section that kind of replaced that large PUP section that we had in the former policy?
That's correct. This is just...
Okay. All right, just so I'm clear on that. Thank you for clarifying that.
If I may ask, you need to be 21 if we pass this through by, what, what age does the clerk need to be to sell?
According to policy in here, 21.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, it's 21, I believe, at a tobacco product shop. Let me just find that specific language here.
That's what we had discussed.
Right, I made sure that made it in. Mayor, members of the council, if you do look at section 118.06, letter H, that is the language that was added in that says, no person under 21 shall sell or offer for sale any licensed products in a tobacco product shop. So again, if you're in the context of a tobacco product shop, you would not be able to sell those products, but it's limited to that particular location.
And that's where the 90% gross revenue...
Correct.
So it doesn't affect...
From tobacco.
Holiday or quick trip or anything?
Now, it was in there because it was too much of a challenge to try to put that regulation in there, so it got pinged in the tobacco product shop license.
Okay.
So most of the businesses can have 18-year-olds selling.
Unless it's a tobacco product shop. It's the shops that, the entities where they sell other products, you know, chips, soda, groceries.
So a vape shop would be 21.
Correct.
I'm looking right at our esteemed lawyer.
Yes.
And she's nodding this way, so I just...
I'll articulate, yes, mayor, members of the council. So a tobacco product shop is one of the other definitions that was added into this version of the ordinance. That is a retail establishment that does derive more than 90% of its gross revenue from the sale of licensed products. Licensed products are both cigarettes, cigars, e-cigs, vape pods, all of the above. So it is specifically directed at impacting the sales of those types of establishments. Would not impact the sales of those products, say, at the gas station, convenience store, grocery store.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any more comments about that? Questions, comments?
If you don't mind, we do have a motion, and it's been seconded, to go to Tobacco 21. So what I'm going to ask Karen to do is give us a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Here. Aye. I'm here, I'm aye.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
If I just may interject one procedural aspect. On your, on the diocesan front of you, there's a resolution 0826-19-02. This authorizes the summary publication of the ordinance, so instead of having to publish all 20 pages of the new ordinance, we can just publish Exhibit A, which is a summary notice, which just saves us some costs. We have less costs with notice of the ordinance. So council wants, wishes to do a summary publication, we just need a motion to amend the agenda to include resolutions 082619-02, and then a vote on that resolution will allow us to do a summary publication versus the full ordinance, and make sure that we reference version B, since that was the one that was just adopted.
Anybody care to make that motion?
I'd move to make the motion to amend the agenda to allow for the vote of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number, resolution number 08-26-19-02, a resolution approving summary publication of ordinance 691-B, 691 amending chapter 118 of the Forest Lake City Code related to tobacco regulations.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item number eight is a discussion items with, we're doing a joint workshop with the Watershed District and the Forest Lake City Council, and what I'd like to do is take a five-minute break, so maybe we can kind of reconfigure things here, so can everybody, maybe on a little bit more even keel, and see how we can make that work. So let's take a five-minute break, and we'll be back here at...
7:50.
Yeah, whatever. At 7:50, we'd just fine, so let's, that okay?
Motion to recess for five minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we recess for five minutes while we reconfigure everything.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, folks, we'll, we'll call a meeting back in order.
Okay, all right.
And this is a joint workshop, so it's really informal, no votes are going to be taken, no decision is made, we're just going to have a conversation, so I really appreciate that. We got the city council, and we have to work closely with the Watershed District. We're not the only one, we had to work with Grace Creek and everybody else, and so I'm sure that adjournments may have some things to talk about. And so, I don't know, Steve, did you want to start off?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. So, so I, I reached out to, just a little background here, I reached out to Myra back in June about trying to have some sort of a meeting with city council, some staff, the Lake Association, and the Watershed District. They have a common discussion about Forest Lake itself, and there are parts of Forest Lake that are speaking. And we talked about doing a boat tour and a number of things, and because of open meeting laws, that wasn't going to work out, so then it suggested we have a workshop. So this has been talked about for a couple of months, and we finally were able to, to agree upon tonight for this workshop. And the intent of this was, I kind of probably instituted this by thinking that, you know, we need to have, create a partnership here among the entities that are really involved in the value of Forest Lake. And so the intent tonight is, I, along with assistants from the Watershed District, putting an agenda together, and I think you have a copy of it, and there's some handouts that we'll have, I think Patrick hopefully brought some of the handouts.
Measure up this.
Okay. And we have some other handouts for you, too. So, so the intent is tonight, as you said, is just to have some open dialogue about things that you're going to hear from our side of the table, and, and obviously, we'd like to hear what you think about things, too. It's kind of a unique thing, I don't think has ever been done before in the city, that we have this type of a workshop for the lake, you know, so I think this is a great opportunity. So maybe we should do introductions first, what do you think, Sam?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. So I'll start. I'm Jerry Gruner. I'm president of the Forest Lake Lake Association.
Sure, I'll be next. Ross Omen, some of you may not know him, but I'm also on board.
Charlie Munson, Forest Lake City Council.
Steve Schmaltz, I'm on the board of the Forest Lake Lake Association, and also a board of the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District.
Megan Parky, district engineer for the Watershed District.
John Spence, I'm currently the president of the Watershed District.
I was the mayor of the city council.
Jamie Johnson, developer.
Dave Adams, public works director.
Ryan Goodman, city engineer.
Same city, city council.
Doug Ginnon, I'm the treasurer.
I'm the treasurer.
Next year, no. No, I'm not, I'm not going to take any of that. I don't want that. Forest Lake Lake Association.
Kathy Beistrum, city council.
Patrick Casey, administrator.
Beth Sterling, Forest Lake Lake Association Board Member.
I'm Kath Wood. I'm the newest board member on the Forest Lake Lake Association, and my wife and I moved here about four years ago. We live over on Forest Lake. Very much love this community.
Jackie Anderson, I'm on the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District Board.
Mike King, administrator.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. All right. So, so in front of you, you do have an agenda, and I sent this over to Patrick, asked for comments back and so forth. So again, we keep this informal. If, if we don't want to talk about something, or we want to add something to it, just speak up. So that's the purpose of the workshop. So first discussion is relative to MS4. Oh, let me back up for you. So just from a timetable standpoint, let's discuss how long we want to be here in this workshop, so...
Yeah, I think, I think we're probably looking at about an hour or so.
That was perfect.
Yep.
Okay, good. All right, we're on track. Okay. So MS4, I attended the June city council meeting when there was a public hearing relative to MS4, and was asking for additional information regarding some of the transparency and kind of what's been going on with MS4 within the city, because it's a critical part of, of the lake itself, because of the drainage from many of the pond areas, and the culvers and the else that drain out in the forest lake. And at that time, I was asking for additional information, and through conversations with Patrick, and most recently with Dave Adams last week, I was able to kind of, be able to have the transparency. I think that's critical to this. What I found interesting, and I'm not sure all the council understands all this, but, you know, the revenue for stormwater management comes from, you know, personal properties and then commercial properties, and the total of that that's collected on an annual basis by the city is $434,000. And in 2018, as Dave was showing me, the city spent about $430,000 of the, of the 434, so it pretty much was close to what the revenue was. And in 2019, the budget is for $455,000, plus or minus, okay? So we're working with what we have, makes sense, revenue to expenditures. You know, so we were trying to find out, what are we doing with that money? What's the city doing with those monies, so we could understand as taxpayers, people who live on the lake, you know, the communities here, what are we doing? And I applaud the city, and I'm not sure when this was published, but out on your website, you have this surface water management fee page out there, and... your website, you have this surface water management fee page out there, and in June, I didn't find this, and maybe it was added afterwards, but you kind of now describe, you know, in 2018, what was spent for MS4, the surface water management to Forest Lake. And I think that's a great tool that needs to be used to be able to communicate to the residents kind of what this is about. And I think you can only really do this at the end of each year, of course, so during the course of the year, when work is going on, you never know for sure what's happening. I know there's been discussions between the Watershed District and the city regarding MS4 over the years, and it's been a critical part of the district, Watershed District's, you know, objectives is, you know, clean surface water. And again, I applaud the city, and particularly Dave and his department, because when I sat down with them last week, I really got to understand, you know, what the city is doing relative to surface water. And it's, it's hard for anyone to find that out. You can't find it anywhere, okay? And the fact that there's a commitment in 2019 here to clean out one of the top five stormwater ponds that was identified as having some of the most major sediment in it, and which was carrying phosphorus ultimately to Forest Lake, was very encouraging to me personally, and the fact that there is continued, you know, steps in trying to do that type of work. But it's difficult for the individual person to understand what's going on with that. So I think one of the things that I would suggest, and I'm going to have Mike speak a little bit more to this, and Jackie wants to speak to it too, is that it needed to be a little more visibility from a city standpoint to the residents to have a little bit of a plan. What are you going to be doing with these monies, not just next year, but more like a two- or three-year plan, okay? I looked at some other cities under their surface water management, and they do have five and ten-year plans with their surface water management. So that's one of the suggestions I would like the council and the staff to think about is to have some plan, now that we have a better assessment as to all these stormwater ponds, what are we going to do to help improve water quality in the community here? So that's one of the first, first thought processes here. The other question is, from a visibility standpoint, is the revenue that's brought in is what I would consider marginal for a community of our size. We'll talk about that, but that's kind of secondly on the agenda here, but. And I'm wondering if you can't, we shouldn't be doing a better job of communicating this to the cit, to the residents of Forest Lake. What in fact is the city doing with surface water management? So I think it's important, I think it's critical, it's taken a number of years to get this ramped up, and we appreciate what Dave is doing with his, with his staff regarding this, but it's really difficult for anyone to find out what is really happening, so.
Dave's a pretty good chap, he's probably stuck along the way, but I suppose collectively you don't have it on one sheet or something, I don't know, so.
But I think of having, having more than, you know, when you do budget, you budget and you think, okay, we'll try to figure out what we're going to do, is to have a little vision, what, what are we going to do over the next two to five years from the surface water management standpoint?
If you go back, I mean, I think the presentation you give at the annual review is good, you had a lot of good information in there, but there wasn't much from a financial aspect. And I think if you go back about four years, there was a point when they actually had a three-year plan, they put out what they spent this year, next year, and the following year, what, what the focus was going to be. Just a simple chart like that would be, would do a long way, I think it helped clarifying and letting people know where we are today and where we're trying to go. So you can go back a few years and find that in the minutes, I'm sure. I may even have a copy at home, I can send you, but that would be very helpful, just at the annual meeting, and maybe even have it on the website, I don't know.
You know, $434,000 sounds like a lot of money, but it isn't, when you think about it, for a community of our size, you know? And one of the most critical aspects of it is funding this program. And in your hands, you actually have this chart, it looks like this. I think Patrick handed it out, hopefully he has one or not. And what's interesting about this chart, and this is kind of the metro surface water management annual fees, and you'll see the range is anywhere from $12 per parcel all the way up to $148 a parcel, okay? And what I did was that, I said, you know, some of these communities don't have a major lake. They don't have a forest lake or a major lake. So if I looked at the lakes or the communities that have major water bodies in them, Maconia has Lake Maconia, Big Lake, then Atanka has huge lake, Monamidi has part of White Bear Lake. And there's a couple other up in there also. And if you look at that, and what they are charging for surface water, Forest Lake is grossly inadequate relative to generation of revenue for surface water management. When you consider Forest Lake is the largest lake in Washington County, it's one of the largest lakes in the metro area, where that stands by being the top four or five, you know? So, so one of the things I really would like to encourage the council to think about is raising the surface water management fee. And I think the last time it was raised was, maybe someone can help me with this, two years ago? Brian, do you remember?
Sounds right.
About two years ago, and I think it was like 32 and went to 40 or something, right? So, again, nothing. I mean, and that's on an annual basis, you know? So, I mean, a $5 increase on a parcel of property is, why you talk about $5, it has to be something more substantial than a $5 increase typically. But unless we start generating revenue now for this process, we will never, ever catch up with what we have to do. There's just not enough, you know, with the amount of pondage and culverts and other things in this community, $400,000 is not going to touch what we need to be doing with surface water management in the city, so. So it's one of the things I'd ask the council to think about here, the next, whenever is, and staff, is to look at surface water management as part of the fees. I'd like to see a 50% increase, it goes from 40 to 60. I mean, it's $20 more a year, you know? I mean, you can't even hardly go buy a hamburger for that. So, I know Mike would like to speak a little bit about MS4 too, so if I can catch up now.
Well, I think you've covered most of it, Jerry. Just from our standpoint, I think I'd like to again acknowledge the work that Dave and his staff are doing presently with the street sweep, but that was a joint project where we started the conversation maybe five years ago, coming September, where we started first looking at the sweeping program. I'd been involved with some research with the University of Minnesota and the city of Riley previously, and could see the benefit of it, and Forest Lake had a lot of similarities of untreated drainage directly to Forest Lake, and what the cost per pound was for that effort. So we went through a process of a number of years, and eventually we, the district gave a grant to do a study, and then we used that to apply for another grant, or assisted the city with applying for that grant, and so we have that in place. Some of those partnerships have been really beneficial. I know that the city has our monthly engineering meeting, and I know that, or recently, that maybe the staff wasn't always, our staff was not always as frequent participants in that, so we'll, we'll have a change of that here in the next month. But a month where we don't have engineering meetings or councils or something, I'd still like to continue those coordination meetings, because those are very beneficial and efficient in communicating what our activities and needs were. And again, just thinking about what might be coming next, again, if we, as Jerry suggested, if something out there in terms of what the plan might be the next couple of years, we could also look at it from our own programming, budgeting, and looking, and also for what's maybe available for a grant application to assist the city.
Yeah, because we're talking about two separate budgets here, I mean, completely separate budgets, you know, the water management plan, and of course, whatever the Watershed District does, so. And of course, you folks do apply for grants and receive them, but it's not always the same every year, and there's different amounts and that kind of thing, too, and then you have to just serve that money out throughout your, your whole district.
Well, some of them are more targeted, you know, one item that I'll, I'll point to that probably not a lot of people are aware of, but for the Shields Lake project. So we had initially worked with the city to do some survey work out there, there was an assumption that maybe there was an area south of, of that that was the main culprit bringing in features of the Shields Lake. We found out that it's, in fact, agricultural fields on the west side, it happened to flow through the Gulf Horse. You know that we've partnered with them, they're letting us use some land in exchange for creating a, basically a sediment pond and a water supply, we're going to offset roughly 26 million gallons of groundwater consumption for that. But the other thing that it did is that through that project, from a phosphorus reduction to Shields Lake, and then we're going to do the first alum treatment this fall, second alum treatment the year after, is that we removed roughly a $1 million liability for the city in Forest Lake. Because under the TMDL requirements, the city had an obligation to address that as a, as a, as a MS4. So, but I mean, it's not anything, we're just glad that we, that we're able to work together, identify the project, we did the grant application, we received that and implementing it. But, you know, now that's literally a million plus dollars that's available to be applied elsewhere for other sort of next level projects. So, because frankly, the taxpayers and the, you know, the users of the, of the lake and the resource itself doesn't care where the money's coming from, or who's making the approval of it to fund, because it's getting done. So that's always been my take, and I know that a large portion of our revenue from the Watershed District comes from residents of Forest Lake as well, and so they, again, they're writing the check, they want to see the results.
What is TMDL?
Oh, my apologies, Total Maximal Daily Load, so it's a, it's a EPA requirement for improving and cured water bodies, and it's passed through each state, and so the Minnesota District Patrol Agency, that is the one that helps direct the developments of the reports of the requirements for those improvements.
Kathy, if you sit through a few of their meetings, they are acronym-heavy.
Oops.
Should we leave it at that?
That's pretty good. That's pretty fair.
We do have a sheet, actually, we put out at the meetings, obviously, for the purpose of glossary.
I'm all acronym-heavy, heavy too, so I understand, and just always try to step back and say, yeah, we probably need to explain this a little bit, right?
One thing I did want to mention, which I don't think a lot of people move on, in 2018, the city did $150,000 of rehab work, mediation work up in the northwest part of the city, which is all relative to Bixby Park, because of all the drainage, and all that area of their drains to Bixby Park, and so, okay, that was a major, major project you did in 2018, that's up in the northwest corner of the city with, with culverts and storm drains and other things like that, which was ultimately an improvement from a drainage standpoint to Bixby Park, if I understand correctly. Yep. Jackie, you want to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that we appreciate Forest Lake's partnership in starting the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District, and that was 20 years ago, and that celebration was in September. So the actual formation took many years, of course, but, but the actual date of signing was September 23, 1999. And there have been many changes in the council and mayors and so on over the years, but the foundation of this watershed was a partnership with two counties, all the cities that are inside of it, with Forest Lake being the chief among them. The water that, that flows to Comfort Lake comes out of the northwest portion of the city, and a little bit in the northeast as well, but primarily around North Shore, to the, most of, most of it's coming from the commercial area on 35W, and it comes over into that commercial area within the city. And it used to just be traveling down an old agricultural ditch that was there, ag used to stop, the city kept developing, and of course, it goes down. Same thing is true with Wyoming City. And so, a lot of what we're dealing with on that end of the watershed is untreated stormwater, and as has been mentioned, there have been improvements along the way. Bixby Park is the majority of the work that's been done, but there's more, there's more that has to be done. And in order to accomplish that, we've been hoping to get a map of the storm sewer system of the city. And the district partnerships have been mentioned before, we're very eager to do partnerships, and there are grant dollars or other dollars, loan dollars available through different programs, primarily through the EPA and the MPCA, that would help accomplish that. So we just need to make sure that that's a high priority on the council's list and the city's list, so that we can work together and accomplish that, hopefully before the next 20-year period. But improvements are being made, we'd like to accelerate that by working to get that mapping done, so that's been a high priority of ours for, for years, and we're hoping that that is something that, as you update your MS4 plan, you can see that happen. And then working with you also on, not only the outlets that go that direction, but also into Forest Lake, as has been mentioned, it's the biggest lake in Washington County, it's the biggest lake in our district, and there are 39 city-owned properties that exit water into the lakes. So we'd like to start working with you about enhancing those. And so that's a project that's going to be in the forefront for us in the near future, and all of the other, either private or public road terminations, basically, is what they end up being, that they sometimes can be on a private property, they're not used anymore. So we're looking beyond just the city-owned properties to do that, because again, that's an input of untreated surface water that we'd like to see treated before you, that's the way.
That brings up another subject, Forest Lake downtown area that's ready for redevelopment. So how do we accomplish that without, without stagnating the project?
Well, the, I'm glad you brought that up, because when the, when the circle was put in, in downtown, the Watershed District worked with the city to enhance the stormwater that was going down Broadway. Some of it was actually leaving that terminal, or that circle spot, and going right toward the park, and so there was very little treatment taking place. But we rerouted that to come up Broadway, it's still a little discharged to, to make it, it's a, a grassy part of the lake, excuse me, the park before it goes in, but most of it was rerouted going north, or going west, I mean, and we put sand-enhanced filter devices along that roadway, working with the county. And so we're doing treatment along the way that eventually, of course, goes into the treatment pond that's behind Walgreens and, and the White Castle, all those properties right there. So it goes into that treatment pond first, and then it exits into the old judicial ditch that goes through Bixby Park. And that was, that's a, just a primo cooperative project right there, because it's city-owned land, the wetland was re, that ditch was rerouted to be more of its natural meandering, and its wetland was restored. And it's beautiful, beautiful, I think treatment, it does its treatment work, but it's a beautiful, beautiful natural enhancement for the city of Forest Lake, and we really ought to be doing more signage, promoting that, because it's, it's just such a, such a phenomenal project. So we thank you for that as well, and so we just are looking for more opportunities to use, we've got some tax forfeit land that the county, two for Washington County, that can be utilized for future treatments as well. So there's lots and lots of opportunities to continue this joint work and enhance the quality of the Sunrise River, which were all part of that larger Watershed District for the same accord.
Mike, do you have something you want to say about that?
Well, I think that you were also getting to another point, if I could maybe accurately assess your question. For the remaining balance of the stormwater requirements for that highly developed area already, the district did an adaptive program. already, the district did an adaptive program implement so that anybody that wants to revolve that downtown area could offset it through a fee process. So, basically, it's a, I don't want to say a push and training, but it's a stormwater management framework where we can, we're looking to create a regional stormwater pond that for applicants, if they're not able to meet the stormwater requirements, they can pay into the treatment downstream in a different location. So, it really is intended for sites like that than the other spiritually developed areas down, part of down Broadway.
What I'm saying, there has to be a way.
Yeah.
Because...
There is a way.
And that's where the tax forfeit probably...
Just to follow up, we have to have some, if we want redevelopment downtown, we have to have some common sense regulations in stormwater, as stormwater management and development standards that aren't, that don't cost out those developers. I think that might be some of the issues that we're going to be facing, is that no matter what the fee, like the carbon switch or whatever you call it, it may begin to not allow developers to come in because that cost gets too high. Part of the problem is we're working with two different districts here. And we have two sets of rules, and we'd like to try to standardize those so a developer, whether he comes from the north side of town or downtown, knows what's coming to them. And some of that has to be common sense, that will allow a current building to either be torn down and redeveloped without major financial impact that drives a developer away. So, I think that's a concern that the city has as well, and we can work with that. At the same time, don't misunderstand, the lake is one of our most important assets here. It really is. But there are ways that we can work together on this thing. And the, all the things that the Lake Association people have done over the years, it's been great too, just kind of trash up. Like Kid did way, way back when for a scope project, you know? And so, little things like that. And part of it, I think, not only the mechanical stuff you folks are doing, is educating people. We need to educate people and pick up your grass, pick up your leaves and that kind of thing, and hold off on fertilizer and whatever. But anyways, a couple items.
Okay, can we, probably should keep moving on.
Yeah, yeah.
So, item number two is, and Jackie mentioned it, and that is, I don't think anybody was aware of this, and thank you to Dave for getting this, but there's thirty-nine parcels of property that the city owns around Forest Lake. I was shocked to hear that. Some of them are dead-end streets. Some are drainage channels for stormwater drainage. Some are actually easements for sanitary sewers. Some are easements for storm sewer work. But thirty-nine parcels, and you know, I add it up, it's almost nine hundred feet of lakeshore the city owns on Forest Lake, you know, which is pretty crazy when you think about it, right?
Fifty feet out of town.
Yeah, 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 that's right. That's exactly it. That's thirty-nine parcels, right? So, you know, as I started thinking about that, you know, there ought to be something more we can be doing with these parcels, you know, to enhance them for a number of reasons. Some of them are being used by the public right now as just accesses to drive out onto the lake, launch their boats, other things like that. So, there needs to be some work done in cooperation with the Lake Association and the city to, you know, put a fence across or put a gate across some of these accesses, because they're not supposed to be launching boats from these accesses. There's a whole AIS problem, because it's uncontrolled in many respects. But also, there are parcels out there where there can be some projects implemented by the watershed district potentially, to improve the water quality going through those parcels out to the lake. You know, to have these parcels sit and either deteriorate, or it actually cause more water quality deterioration to Forest Lake, is something we shouldn't be doing as a community, right? So, it's something that I think we want to bring up to your attention, because I think Mike is, would like to start exploring some of these parcels, to look at if there are some projects that can be done on them without impacting what the city needs them for, but also to improve what they're ultimately going to do for the lake, including the dead-end streets, which some of them, you know, are literally just sewage canals going down to the water. So, you know, that's just something we want to bring up to council and staff, that it's something we think we should be looking at from a long-term standpoint. So, I don't know, we have any thoughts on that.
We allocated some money in our budget for twenty-twenty just to start working with the staff, do an assessment, and then put together a bigger plan and see if we, just like your stormwater pond, do things prioritized.
So, two thousand seventeen, we went through a handful of areas that we've reviewed, and what was the conclusion on all those areas that were studied and examined at that time?
So, the overall project, I think, like the six-streeped one in particular, so the, well, different engineering firm that did the analysis, and I came up with a recommendation to apply for a grant, but the overall cost pretty good from scoring, phosphorus reduction standpoint, scored poorly. So, there it's a matter of reevaluating it and looking at, I think, maybe Ryan, you had suggested like a one location, just a simple sum would go a long ways, and this is calling something like that, so.
We've spent a lot of field time and energy on that, if we could relocate any of those, if there's some low-cost, high-benefit solutions that would make sense that could be tied in with other stuff.
It might be part of your five-year plan, if you're looking at adjusting seven or eight volts a year, next five years, or something like that. Now, when you're planning how far you want to reach, you could look at deflationary averages, or you could say seven basis like you said, or even underground.
And I think even more importantly, I think of some simple things, that some of these accesses that people are using, you know, for their own personal use, because they're wide open, I really think we need to be considering doing something to prevent that from happening. And they're even using them to drive out there in the wintertime.
Well, my neighbor parks this truck up there.
I was just saying.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, well, I think, I think there's some value in identifying that, working with staff to kind of, you know, again, some low-hanging fruit, but I think from a total water quality standpoint for Forest Lake, we should look at some of this stuff.
City has a pretty current inventory and all that, because of all the pressure to vacate those parcels to adjacent properties, so they increase their front footage. And staff's been adamant about retaining those for future use with their stormwater compliance. Some of them are needed to some of the development areas of the plat that allow access to those. So, there's a legal pathway to follow too. So, I know you guys hear about this pretty frequently, sporadically over a term of your chair. So, a lot of unique situations have arisen from that, so.
Many residents would love to buy that property that's adjacent to it.
There's a lot of pressure there to have them buy those.
There was some, we studied that for a while. It could be a real nightmare.
And we're not suggesting that. We're suggesting that we use the property for the benefit of the locals, for the benefit of the water quality. Yeah, okay.
Mike, if you could, for two minutes, for those who aren't aware, how you guys prioritize and fund your projects, you have a scoring system for the biggest bang.
Correct. So, we, in more recent years, done a combination of analysis, largely the fact that we're just done through diagnostic monitoring, meaning that we take samples and then we evaluate the, what we would anticipate to see if there are reduction or improvement standpoint. Smaller projects like these, frankly, these dead-end street ones, could be more from just standard engineering calculations and modeling. So, but presently, we've had many of our projects come in at a very low cost, life cycle cost, from a proven through a water quality standpoint, typically, I'd say, at least under three hundred dollars per pound. This one in total was getting close to two hundred, or two thousand dollars per pound of phosphorus reduced. So, didn't score well from a grant application, and it was something that the district also, at that time, given our efforts in other areas, you know, for example, the Shields Lake is going to, well, also this project was maybe going to reduce something like nine pounds per year. The Shields Lake one is going to reduce, you know, a couple hundred pounds per year, plus the alum treatment. So, there are literally much bigger fish to fry for, given the limited staff time. But we want to come back to these, and yes, we spent some time looking at them initially. We get complaints about a couple of the ones that the dead-end streets close to downtown. And I'll just say that those were landscaped, they were not engineered initially. So, the water, by observation, at least, there's some rain events. I can see that the water just flows largely through them, but not really used for treating. So, those are, again, are ones that we would probably want to reevaluate and do. But part of the, some of the things that Jerry brings up is more, you know, just service-wise to the community, maybe standardizing the access, having a good path or something could bring a canoe or kayak through or something versus tracking the vehicle through or launching a water grab.
I think also, handling this on a program basis instead of a line on one basis, but looking at it in the aggregate, that there's thirty-nine input sources that we haven't looked at for Forest Lake, plus all of the other private ones that we talked about earlier. So, if it's approached more on the program level, so that, somebody mentioned doing so many per year, that's, I think, the point of this, is that jointly, we will tackle this problem. It can't all be done at one time, but it will go from the most important ones down to the rootier ones over time.
There's never enough money.
So, one final item, also next year, we'll have staff, or at least we're looking to put together a sort of entry-level monitoring program that the staff can do with some low-cost devices. And so, we have not gone and looked at all the inputs into Forest Lake before we did the major ones. This would be an opportunity to then do the, these smaller ones, you know, and things like that, so that, because we know that there's sometimes just even just, you know, small pipes that are discharging, but we don't know if they're concentrated, or if they're fairly clean water, or what the makeup of that is. So, it's another reason for us to start on some of these pieces like this. I guess we feel like Shields and a couple other ones are, who are really big projects, but we cumulatively, in the long term, these are another areas that we want to look at.
Okay, item number three, weed harvester. This is all me. If there's ever a thorn in my side, it's the weed harvester, not negatively. So, the city is, through Dave and his staff, have supported a weed harvester for a number of years. And right now, currently, the city's responsible for the maintenance and the fueling and the disposal of, we call it native vegetation, by the way, not weeds. Weeds kind of sound bad, and people think, oh, it's bad. Well, native vegetation is actually healthy for a lake. So, we call it native vegetation. Anyways, and the Lake Association is paying for the operation of harvester. And we've been doing that now for a couple of years, where the Lake Association is paying for the actual operator. And the city is running the harvester and running the maintenance on it and hauling the native vegetation away. This year has been, and for a number of reasons, we don't need to get into all the reasons, but this year has been the worst I have seen for the years on Forest Lake. And I receive emails daily from people on the lake who are complaining about the native vegetation, the fact that they can't get their boats out from their docks, out into open water, so forth and so on. When is the weed harvester going to come and take care of the problem? And I politely explain to them, it's not, you know, sorry, we don't have the resources, we don't have the dollars, and so forth and so on. However, I think we need to be smarter about this for next year, potentially. I think the native weed population of Forest is not going to decline. If anything, it's going to continue to expand. It's a recreational nuisance. It's not a water quality nuisance. It's actually, you know, good for water quality, but from a recreational standpoint, it's impeding recreational use of Forest Lake. And that ultimately will impact the use of the lake by outside voters who come to the lake to use it, to spend money on it, and so forth and so on. So, what I'd like the council to consider doing here, because you're in your budget season right now, is to consider, the Lake Association, and I had a conversation with Dave, is willing to pay for a full-time operator next year to run the harvester. But we would need the city to consider to increase their budget for twenty-twenty for the maintenance, the fuel, and disposal of the vegetation and so forth like that. We're not going to solve the problem just with one harvester out there working next year, but we need to try to show good faith to the nine hundred and ninety people that live around the lake, that, you know, the Lake Association conjunction with the city are trying to do something to help them from a recreational standpoint on the lake. So, this is not a big ask. It's just, it's a, you know, it's not that many monies by any means. You know, I think the city spends, Dave, what, three, four thousand dollars a year on the maintenance and fuel on the harvester? And it's being used half-time right now. So, it's not a significant amount of money, but I think having the harvester out there full-time next year, and it still won't get around every part of this lake next year because it's only one harvester, but I ask you to consider doing that here with your budget for twenty-twenty.
There's some DNR connections with you, right there, as far as, how far?
Yes. I mean, we have to permit where the harvester can cut, and that permitting does not allow it to cut in any areas that have been designated with AIS, the quantity-based species, because we don't want it to be cutting, cutting and spreading of that. So, we have very designated GPS coordinates, you know, that is put into the GPS on the weed harvester, that he can only go into those areas, and it's mapped where he's been to. So, then we also have, you know, not legal obligation with DNR, if anybody challenges them. So, you know, this year, we got permitted for around fifty acres. We haven't even cut the fifty acres yet. And well, we're going to end up not being able to, just because we haven't had enough time to even do that. So, it's not the, it's not the solution to the issue, but it's, it's a perception, probably what's most important, from residents, that there is some support to try to do something about it.
Well, it does help in some areas.
It does help. Absolutely, it helps. It helps, absolutely. But there's no way we can cut the entire shoreline of Forest Lake.
No, but we can cut, help get to the hundred fifty-foot mark.
Yes.
From a hundred and fifty feet in is the homeowner's responsibility. And that's a DNR regulation, so we can, we can rely on that. But many of them can't get even past that, because there's even more weed out past a hundred fifty. So, if we can just keep, cut channels where they can come down and get out, then it helps a lot, so.
I think that's a good thing to point out, the hundred fifty feet, because my staff gets pulled over by boats constantly saying, come in, come and cut around my dock, come and cut a channel.
And we have to start educating our members, and we'll start that this winter.
Yeah.
They don't want to hear it, though. And we, our annual meeting, we spend a lot of time on this.
And my staff have been pretty good about, here's the tarpaulin, here's the box, here's where I am, I cannot go past here.
Right, correct.
You know, so I think that education of, I think back in the past, it was thought of as, we're just going to go around the shoreline and cut people, cut around people's docks and open up channels, well, that, we can't do that anymore, you know, so.
We've gotten a lot better about managing that. Years past, it was pretty loose. We've tightened it up considerably now in the last two years, so, okay. All right. Trying to stay on time schedule here. Next item number four is the twenty-twenty city budget for Forest Lake. So, in your annual budget for the last, well, first of all, hang on, Steve, I'm going to have Steve go through a little bit of a presentation.
You all have a copy of this I just passed around. It talks about the importance of Forest Lake, D-Lake, not the city D-Lake. And this, to give you some background on, in two thousand seven, which was starting in bad times, right? The city cut out, we had two full-time harvesters working on the lake to control currently pond weed, and they dropped both those harvesters, which was about sixty-five or seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Well, that caused the population to form the Lake Association. So, seven of us got together to form the Lake Association. That's how it got restarted. And then there was a constant battle for the next two years, back and forth about who has responsibility for the lake. And a lot of the board members at that, or the council members at that time said, people living on the lake, you use the lake, it's your problem. And we couldn't get off that. So, in two thousand ten, we went around and started collecting some data, and that's what this is a summary of. So, it's dated, because it was done in two thousand ten, but relatively speaking, you can see some trends and so forth. So, let's just quickly go through this. Impact on taxes, I have worked with Kevin Corbett, director then of the Washington County Property Records and Tax Services, the team had a special report for me. So, the total residences at that time in Forest Lake was about sixty-nine hundred, generated about four-point-four million in tax levy. The lake residences, nine eighty-four, was fourteen percent of that, and generated thirty-five percent of the tax levy. But what's really interesting is, when you talk to Kevin, your property tax is evaluated by the size of your law. by the size of your lot, the size of your home, the quality of your home. And if you live on the lake, you get benefit for a tax on front footage, which back then was like, I don't know, four hundred dollars a foot, something like that. So that extra tax for just being on the lake is that last column, shoreline tax levy. So although one point five three, over half of it came from just being on the lake. So really, you could argue that that money should be donated to a certain extent to the lake because it generated by the lake. So that was why we put that in there. Next question is number two, who uses the lake? And this was done through some analysis of DNR, permit analysis, but again, we have sixty-nine hundred residences, fifty-two percent have one or more watercraft permits. I got that from the DNR for a zip code five five zero two five. There's about thirty-five hundred people that have at least one or two permits living in that zip code, which is pretty much Forest Lake. Of the fifty-two percent, thirty-four percent lived on the lake, sixty-seven percent did not live on the lake. So that tells you that more people in the community are using the lake than people that live on the lake. So it's really, truly a community asset and a community lake, which was an obstacle we had to overcome with, with council at that time. And the other key point is who comes to visit the lake and use the lake? And we did that, got that data from a DNR Creel surveys over a number of years. And again, residents living on the lake that were surveyed while fishing, forty-six percent of which, sixty-seven percent were non-lake residents. Then the other part of those people that were visiting were fifty-four percent were visitors or non-residents. And that's a significant amount of visitors coming in each weekend and that, to, to provide extra business for the local businesses. So it's very important to have this asset that attracts people in, to help the community with businesses and so forth. And if you add those two numbers up, it works out to be about eighty-five percent of the lake users do not live on the lake. The last thing I have to do was park and lake funding. And parks are important, and everybody loves parks. And in 2016, we had two hundred and four park acres, up eleven percent since 2010. Excuse me, and generates no tax revenue. The lake is twenty-three hundred acres, and I look upon it as being a park. It generates one point five million tax revenue in 2010. Park, there was four hundred thousand spent on park maintenance budgets and programs for 2016, up from two thousand five thousand in 2010. And then lake spending of fifty-five thousand dollars in 2018, down from sixty-two thousand in 2007. So you can see the trend here, everything's going up, the lake budget has stayed relatively the same or even down a little bit. So again, we're wondering now if it's not a time to increase, look at increasing the, the lake budget. Now, we can't keep asking for money every year, and we're not expecting this to get all done in one year. But again, I think you can make an argument for that, that we should be able to bump that up a little bit. Maybe not this year, but next year, we have several requests, and I think it's important that we try and increase that number, especially when you look at almost nine hundred thousand each year is going, is coming directly from the taxes on the homes on the lake to the city, so.
Yeah, so I think.
Any questions on that? Let's, let's kind of quickly move through that.
The city budget is fifty-five thousand dollars for Forest Lake, and that's used, those monies are spent every year through supporting some lake association, the last couple of years, the original water mill fill treatment, and then other services that are done through the watershed district. So fifty-five thousand dollars gets spent, because it gets invoiced to the city and the city pays invoices. But it's been that number for a number of years. And we're, we're asking for the council and staff to consider raising that in light of a lot of things that we're seeing and happening, in particular the impacts to the lake and the need for additional support, you know, from, it is, you know, one of the major assets of the city unfortunately also. So again, budget cycle right now, you know, consider raising fifty-five dollars, and that's what we're asking you to consider. Any questions on that? Number five, this is real quick. This is the public dock at Lakeside. So Lakeside Park, you know, is owned by the city, and it's not a DNR controlled access there either. The Lake Association has donated, has donated to the city eighty feet of additional dock there, which is that public dock right next to the swimming area. And there has been, we added another forty feet this year, there has been considerable issues with the dock out there, and including, I think, some liability issues, ultimately for the city, and, and just, it's not the right thing to do, but. And I talked with Dave, Dave helped, you know, put up some signage there. But what was happening, and still happening, is that being that dock is out so far now, it's deep enough water, the kids love going out there and diving off the dock, and unfortunately, it's only this deep for them. And so we've, you know, we've gotten kids that, you know, when I've been there, I tell them to get off and don't swim and so forth, and there's signs now of that. But one of the things we want to consider doing, but we need your support on it, is to take the total footage of that dock out there and next year split it into two docks. So we still have the same amount of dockage to tie up boats, you know, during the summer, but the water will be much shallower at the end of the dock, and the kids won't be out there swimming and jumping off of it. And that should result in a safer environment for everybody involved. But the city would need to do some improvements to come off the sidewalk to get to two docks, because right now there's an improvement off of the sidewalk only to go to one dock. So again, it may not be a major thing, I don't think the DNR would have to be involved because it's, that property is owned by the city, it's not a DNR controlled access. But it's just something I want to bring up because I think we need to do a better job to gather on that dock next year. I don't want to see some kid break his neck out there diving off of it, I don't care what the signs say, you know. For the same token, it's been a welcome to everybody who boats on the lake to be able to have more room to tie up the boats, to come into the restaurants downtown and so forth. Because before, if there's no place to tie up, they just didn't come downtown. So now it's bringing more business downtown also, so. Just something that I can work with Dave about.
Some of that subject has come up a couple of times as far as enlarging the dock area and making it more accessible.
Yeah.
So a certain part of that subject coming up.
Yeah, I mean, someone brought up, well, putting up a fishing pier. Well, you know, it's a possibility, but remember the water depth there at that part of the lake is less than three feet, you know, it's not an ideal fishing pier area, right? So, you know, how far do you expand docks? You know, if there's dock space, people will come and tie their boats up, and they'll come downtown. So it's something we need to be thinking about from a redevelopment standpoint, perhaps, you know, longer term, but one step at a time, maybe next year we just maybe consider to, you know, dividing those docks in half and having it be a more safe public, safer area for everybody, so. So that's about it, as far as the real kind of formal thing. We had some, this item six here was just again to, I think, expound on the successes that have happened in this partnership. You know, I think one of the things that we've added to this is we would like to see some better communication with the entire city newsletter regarding the lake. You know, it's used by as many people as Steve mentioned, you know. I know there's a newsletter goes out from the city, I think it'd be, it'd be helpful to talk about some of the things potentially that are going on with the lake and to help the communication standard, so, something I hope you do.
I certainly think something like that can be done.
Yeah. Mike, do you guys want to talk about anything else as far as the partnerships now?
No, I think you're already covered.
Okay. All right. And that takes us to item number seven. Touch on that?
Yes, I think Manon Jameson already did, but we have our twentieth anniversary, we have here in September. So our tigafi event is going to be on Saturday, September twenty-first, at eight AM, the noon, you still have your appointments. We are going to do a tour of some of our major projects around the district, and so we certainly invite everybody that is interested to come. We'll be meeting at the district office, and a bus is already reserved, and we'll go off from there. And near the course of the week, we'll have a few things at the office, one open house, and a few online trivia things. Jessica's doing there.
Will this be advertised, then, also?
Yes, I think we have.
As soon as I could have barely seen you back there, you wanted to have a comment? Come on.
Susan, yeah. My formal training is in aquaticology, yes, by the time where my mouth is. I've been a chef volunteer for over ten years. I am also a member of Forest Lake Lake Association, although I live on probably the highest point in the city of Forest Lake. And most of you know that as a council member, I did say that the goddess helps those who help themselves, and pointed out that on Clear Lake, which the city also helps, they have more than ninety percent of their residents that are members of the Lake Association. I would hope that as the Forest Lake Lake Association, that would be including me, says the city, twenty bucks is not a big deal, why can't you raise the, the MS4 stormwater tax by twenty bucks, that there would be a commitment by the Forest Lake Lake Association that you will get at least seventy percent of your homeowners and your property owners to consider that twenty bucks, the old hamburger thing, I heard it.
Yep.
All right? To be members of the Lake Association.
I would love seventy percent.
Well, and, and that is something that, that, as I said, goddess helps those who help themselves, and it is, it is important that as, as you're asking, you're showing that you are also, we are also doing what we can. Of the five people on my street that have boat permits, not one of them, and I have asked them, goes on Forest Lake. And most of them are hardcore Fisher people, and three of, three of them have multiple boat permits. So that would be more boat permits than there are, there are folks. I guess I would also hope that, I did volunteer to do one of those landscape designs and the help with the planning in the downtown. And I would hope that you would encourage folks to do more volunteering on those planning projects, because you've got master gardeners, you've got master water stewards in this community, who, that's what we do. So as you're, as we're asking, the Lake Association is asking for dollars, I think that we also have to make the commitments, that we will be true partners in the process.
Let me just touch on that, that if there's, you know, probably the most frustrating part of the present Lake Association is the whole membership discussion. And believe it or not, there's a culture in the city and the residents around the lake regarding, I don't know if it's an old history with Lake Association or things that have happened with the city in the past or whatever, but there is a lot of resistance from people to join the Lake Association, even personally asking them, you know. And you are correct, Susan, about Clear Lake, but it was a crisis on Clear Lake that caused them all to become a Lake Association member. So crises has caused people to band together. Now, we don't want a crisis on Forest Lake, but.
But, but as I hear from, from residents who do, and live on the lake, they consider the weeds to be a crisis, and your emails will reflect that.
Yeah.
And I know that she gets phone calls too. And so as, as it's portrayed as a crisis, then, then we all need to rally around.
Agreed.
And, and one last thing. It, it's often not a good thing to try and climb a ladder by stepping on somebody below. And so to say that there is funding for parks that should be going to the lake perhaps, or that there's inequity, I think that that argument more widespread publicly would do more damage to the Lake Association's request for funds. Those parks are, are very, very heavily used, especially by out of towners. And so sauces and juices and ganders and grades.
No, I think the point was that the lake, it should be considered as being part of the park system, but a revenue generating part of the park system, that was the point, the fact that, here you've got a, a park used by a lot of people from the water, and it's generating revenue, but it really hasn't had a chance to move up in terms of supporting that particular aspect of the park system.
And I understand that, but the entire property tax of a home on the lake, to me, does not, is not part of the lake revenue, because that, I think property tax is.
Thank you, Susan. This gentleman in the back wanted to comment?
Yeah, twenty-six years on the lake since nineteen ninety-one.
Why don't you come forward so we can hear you say?
Yeah, so I've lived on the lake since nineteen ninety-one. This is a great meeting, glad to see you to get together. I got to meet Jerry via email here, and I really like the progress of the numerical view of it. I will say I share the perception, negative perception of Forest Lake Lake Association. I'm now a member, I sent my dues in a month or so ago. I don't know exactly where it comes from, but I know that there's not that positive due, and I mentioned to Jerry, I think that you guys should get a banner on the harvester that says sponsored by, and when it's out there, that people see it, and it's costs you a hundred bucks or a banner, it would go a long way. I'll tell you that in my entire time living there, I could not tell you a positive thing that the Lake Association has done. That's not your fault, I just don't see it. Most people don't get that involved in a lot of local politics, I don't do Facebook for other reasons, and so I'm not getting that information. It's a big marketing problem that has to get solved. And the lake is in very bad shape right now, it's in the worst shape it's ever been. When I moved here, the harvest, two harvesters ran all summer long, and we were part of Forest Lake Township at the time. If you think there's no money now, let me tell you about the no money in Forest Lake Township. So if we managed to do it back then, I don't know why we can't manage to do it now, I understand the DNR rules have changed, and I'm going to give you Jerry on this. I think this lunacy around you can't harvest invasive species has got to stop. We will never get the lake under control if we don't push back on the DNR about where we can harvest, because the fact that I live on the south side of Second Lake and a hundred and twenty foot dock, which means I get twenty-two more feet of weed control, won't even get me close to getting out onto the water without having to, an issue with navigation. So this is the gem of the community. If you think we have problems attracting business at Forest Lake today, let the lake become a slump, and then we really will have a problem. And this is a problem that only gets worse over time if we don't get in front of it. This is the moment to fix it, and let's make this really an attractive, fun place to be in a great body of water versus unfortunately the dreschel we've had in the last couple of years.
Well, thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
Well, I just had a thought, as I was sitting here, and my fellow council members probably won't like to bring this up because there's only so much time in the day, but we, and I granted, we also have Clear Lake, and, but what I'm thinking is, we sit on different committees and councils, I sit on the Forest Lake Area Athletic Association, and I'm not a voting member, but I go and I attend and I give an update, but why do we not have a council liaison for the Lake Associations? I mean, it seems like a way to change the narrative, it's a narrative, you, I mean, I would, it's something that, you know, I'd volunteer my time to do that, and that, or Mr. Dryer, I'm sure would love to as well, too. But I'm just, you're looking like, why would I do it? And obviously, there's, there's Clear Lake as well.
It's something to talk about.
But something to talk about in the future.
And we have regular scheduled board meetings for the Lake Association, we have about eight or nine a year.
Just need to help get some of those messages out.
Anybody else have any comments?
I just want to say in general, I've been living in Forest Lake for ten years, and prior to that, most of my adult life, raising my family in Shoreview, which was a leader of, you know, really educating its citizens on water quality and environmental things, and really was a leader in that, in that area. And I would love to see Forest Lake do that, really promote themselves as a leader of water quality and, and their lake, and just really make that a visible thing. I mean, that's really, to a lot of millennials and the younger couples that are moving places, they want to hear things like that. They want to know their community is being responsible and looking at those things. So I would just challenge the city to become more visible and tell that kind of strategy.
Longhand lines, how close of a partnership can Forest Lake, the city, and the Forest Lake Lake Association have had for that kind of promotion? You know, where's the, where's the boundary, right? You know, publicly doing things together, saying, this is, this is good for the city, this is good for the lake. Helps, you know, it probably helped drive this getting more nervous.
Yeah, we tried to divide it right in half, it was two different watershed districts too, so, you know. And so, in fact, because that line is not very far from here. One project, for instance, where they mixed concrete down there, the line is through that yard. It's Clear Lake on one side, I mean, and the, and Rice Creek on the other side, but that's the point, that, you know, that's what we're trying to work with too, you know, so.
I think the entire lake though is in our partnership. Our lives are just here.
Oh, some comment about it when you're...
It's a very jagged boundary.
Yeah.
But the entire lake and its tributaries are...
But we do know that water quality doesn't impact ultimately value of homes. There's been studies regarding that done too. So, you know, from a city revenue standpoint, you know, let's not let Forest Lake deteriorate to a point where we have bigger problems. It will affect the tax base.
Does the city, can the city endorse Forest Lake Lake Association? I think we're struggling with this impression of the rest of the residents, you saying, you know, is it positive? Do we say something positive? Yes, the organizations are doing something positive. Everybody should feel good about it, and she should be a member.
I am. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody.
Yeah, I just got a couple of comments. I mean, I think a lot of us aren't even aware of a lot of the projects that have been completed and the success of all those. And, you know, going back to this Hayward, your iron enhanced area that probably a lot of people don't even know about, if they don't regularly talk about that or maybe have a map showing some of these areas of improvements that have been made. You guys have had a handful of smaller projects around Forest Lake. We've obviously done a lot of stuff with Rice Creek and the Lake Association on Clear Lake. And they've even funded some of those studies that have led to infrastructure projects. So, that's some of the partnerships that that Lake Association has developed through some of the project developments. Washington County has obviously done some stuff. And, you know, with our street CIP, and we know where we're going. You know, we can go so far each year based on what we get allocated for funding. So, if there's things that you guys can line up with our street projects, that's in the works, you know, till 2040. So, we know where we're going based on what we have for funding. We're obviously striving to always achieve more, find financial ways to benefits. A lot of our stuff's grant-based, and we've been very lucky on how much grants we've brought in the last five years. Our stormwater budget's $430,000, but when you look at some of the projects we've done in the Rice Creek area, we're almost touching on a lot of projects to grant opportunities that have been successful and through the school districts being involved with those stuff up front. So, a lot of partnerships have been going on. I know there was some comments about coordination meetings. Just so everyone is aware, every single development, public project, redevelopment sites, and then in the back, we do provide the MINDOT projects and the county projects. If the county had one going on, the Shields Lake Water Poly Projects in here, the large, or the lake treatment kind of stuff that's been ongoing. And then just some other areas in particular such as violations we're working through that we have these meetings monthly, every Wednesday. We do not have them July or December because of Fourth of July week and New Year's week. And then even with this, these meetings are held with all city staff, which includes administration, public works, engineering, building inspections, especially when we're having erosion issues on subdivisions where we then go and red tag some sites to stop the erosion. Rice Creek attains those, and a member from Comfort Lake Forest Lake attends those as well. So, the request for September updates has been sent out. If you are bringing somebody new, I can send it to you and request the update too. And we're kind of going to go through a transition here. So, you know, whatever issues we have, we want to talk about those with the entire city staff, administration, and if there's specific smaller projects that are going on, we have after meetings too that linger through the morning. Mapping, we do have everything 2D mapped. We have provided that to the watershed district. As our street projects come through the neighborhoods, that's when we're getting the 3D info, the inverted information. It's just, we don't have the funds, obviously, to go through the whole entire city to shoot everything at the level you would want for hydraulic model. So, obviously, in the older neighborhoods, that data isn't as accurate as what we have in the new subdivision. I mean, we still have record plans and everything, so we can go and get elevations by thumbing through record plans, but not into a hydro, or a computer model. So, that stuff that's being built with the projects as they move forward. There are a lot of stuff that's identified for future work that we're scoping with and trying to work through and fund and line up. You know, I know right off the top of my head, 2026, I have $60,000 extra in there for another water quality structure. So, there are those things that are out there. It's just, there's a lot of, I guess, differences on what's asked during budget season or what's the opportunity presented. So, you know, Dave and I are the guys that have that info. So, he knows everything that's in it and infrastructure related. But then also, he funds a position out of his stormwater fee that deals with a lot of the requirements, the MS4 requirements. So, you know, right off that 430, there's $100,000 for a full-time employee with benefits, you know? So, those are exercises we've tried to gone through annually to increase that. And, you know, some years were successful, some years were not. City did increase a lot of the utility rates to address a lot of the infrastructure on sewer and water. There was a huge benefit here with the, we just finished the 1718 project. I think we touched 16 sites, lift stations. Our next big one is 22, which will get our lift stations. That's serve all the public sewer up to 1995 or newer now. So, coming out of the 60s and 70s of infrastructure to finally get, you know, some relief, hopefully out of 22, that project is funded. Which if those will go bad, that would be a direct impact on lake situation. So, a lot of these lift stations are being retrofitted for bypassing our generators. So, if we lose power, which is common, you know, that's another thing we're working with Excel, that it doesn't overflow in worst-case scenario that you had out in, was it Medina? Or, you know, that small town in the Tonka. So, a lot of things in the works. I know we didn't obviously touch on all the things that we've been successful about, but there are a lot of things to cheer about. And hopefully, we can keep, you know, talk to your association members, you know? Maybe they don't know about it. If you've only been here for four years, you don't know about all the great things that have been accomplished and are in the works. So, maybe that's something we can generate, just a map.
Communication, I mean, let's all face it. I mean, perception is because of miscommunication, generally speaking, or uncommunication. We're not enough. So, I think we all know, you know, we all need to communicate more. And so, maybe part of the discussion here is, what do we do together as partners to try to communicate more to the community of what in fact is being done in the community?
He's got good information, obviously, good idea where I would use it.
Ryan, I got to ask you a quick question.
I got another question, so go ahead.
The sanitary sewer running underneath Second Lake.
That's my question.
So, that was installed in the 60s.
The line from the new lift station that was put in...
Crossed the lake, that's buried out there.
96, 98, the new line?
Mid 90s. Oh, mid 90s, it was installed in the mid 90s?
Yeah.
Okay, so the old one is...
There's two lines that run. There's one in the northeast, and then there's the main one that comes across. So, they laid the pipe across the lake in the winter and sank it once the ice thawed.
But the old line is still in service?
No, it's one line.
It's only one line now? The old line is abandoned?
It's a thick HCP pipe.
Okay. So, we don't have any concern about a rupture in the old line?
Can't...
The old line's not in service?
It's a newer pipe.
Okay.
It's a very thick wall pipe. We have gone through some exercises to know what we might be dealing with. Maybe two years ago, we just had contractors come in and give us quotes and talk about staging, how we would deal with it if we had to internally. Obviously, if we would be able to detect something from the updated control panels on the lift station, if something's going on in between there and the line, that you would most likely send in divers.
My concern was, I didn't realize you had the line put in the 90s. I thought it was still from the 60s. So, okay.
What diameter is that?
Size of that? We got enough pipe to get from here to Duluth and almost back, so I can't remember all the pipe sizes. But it's a force main, so it's a pressurized pipe that's weighted down. Thick wall, HCP. I'm not even going to guess.
To my recollection, back when Mike Tate was here, and we had the big problem by our side of Second Lake, and he dumped it over the first side of the lake. It was a large diameter pipe. That was flowing, and we had some issues with it because back when Mike Tate was there.
2009 and 12, both lift stations on each side of the lake were totally replaced. So, they're newer, and I know the south one hasn't, doesn't have a generator?
Just been a question, if I recall, the larger diameter pipe. So, yes, it would be tragic if that failed.
The question has come up, but you actually, I'm very encouraged that it's actually from 90s. I have no problem with that line anymore. I thought it was still the original line from the 60s.
So, what do you got, 3500 years? An HCP pipe?
It won't be in our lake.
Well, I certainly want to thank everybody for being here tonight. And everybody...
Thank you, appreciate it.
If everybody will put a shirt back, we would appreciate it. And then the council, we have a couple more little tiny items to take care of. Folks, can you take the conversation outside? We had a couple more items we got to take care of. You're sure welcome to stay, but... Okay, so now we're back to item number nine on our agenda tonight, and that's staff updates. And we'll start out with, if you don't mind.
Sure. Mayor and city council members, I set a couple items for you tonight. First, we have completed Julie Griffin's background check for the police administrative assistant position, and she passed it with no concerns or issues. Julie's first date of employment with Forest Lake Police Department will be September 5th, and we welcome her to our Forest Lake family. Secondly, our officers have been taking many reports of tampering and thefts from motor vehicles this past weekend. It appears to be a pattern where, that possibly young kids or older kids or young adults are breaking into vehicles that are parked in residents' driveways. And I just want to take this opportunity just to remind everybody to keep your valuables out of your cars. Definitely keep them out of sight and also lock your vehicles when you do leave them parked in the driveway. We try to do a lot of extra patrols at night, but we can't be on every street and every neighborhood 24/7, of course. So, if the residents can do their part, that would be great because we'd like to get that pattern stopped. Other than that, I have nothing else unless you have some questions for me.
Any questions for Rick? If not, thank you very much. Dan, do you have anything?
No updates, unless you have questions for me.
Questions for Dan? Karen?
No updates.
I have no report either.
No updates.
Boy, this is going easy.
Dave?
No update, good. And Ryan?
I should probably provide one update. Last Monday night, we held our public open house for the ADA transition plan. Two planning commission members, one an engineer from Hennepin County, I believe it was a chairperson from Lynn Township, and council member vice room, they all attended. Really went smoothly in regards to, you know, public feedback that we received through this process. Obviously, you guys are a lot farther than a lot of cities. A lot of cities are still soliciting proposals to do this work. And we're basically to the stage of bringing a final document back for final adoption and then sending off to MINDOTS. Probably the most valid comment that we received through the process was, you know, we require a six-foot minimum sidewalk in subdivisions, you know? Probably not so applicable to the downtown district where, you know, a six-foot is much difference than, you know, if you had something wider that would allow for two-way traffic, which is more common in downtown facilities. So, potentially, we would look at creating a separate requirement within the downtown district areas that's, say, try to achieve 10 feet or something like that, which will allow better walkability and stuff that we've talked about through the strategic planning on how we can enhance the downtown. So, you know, that's something we'll review and consider, part of the engineering standards and city ordinances. But other than that, really, it's a plan we have that really kind of identifies your areas that are need improvement. And our plans for those improvements are, as the street projects come through or the cooperative agreement projects, why we've adopted standards and policies is now we implement those in the review process, so the developers are following that as well for consistency throughout the city. And then, within the budgets, I can't remember exactly what year, but there's separate funding identified for standalone ADA compliant projects. You know, it might be just an intersection, bringing an intersection up to code. Public Works is doing a lot more maintenance than ever, so a lot of the areas where they're heaved or offset, they're, you know, grooving that down to make that a smooth transition to, you know, meet the ADA requirement. So, a lot of things are going on. Really was a great identification of the deficiencies that we need to address and where those are. And then also clean up and clear a lot of our policies and procedures, and then just make things more consistent through, all the way from public design through the review process when we either have cooperative agreement projects with MINDOT Washington County or the school district and/or private redevelopment. So, that's kind of where we're at with that. So, if there's any specific questions or other projects, that's all I have.
Any questions for Ryan? No? Okay, thank you. The city council updates. Paul, do you have anything for us?
No, the only meeting that was the watershed, and it was the same evening of our budget. So, I chose to come to the budget meeting, which was auxiliary important.
Yes.
Wow.
And Kelly, do you have anything?
I have one update. The Forest Lake Area Athletic Association will hold its third annual community night on September 13th, starting at 5:00 p.m. There is a softball doubleheader, and it's the Forest Lake Area Athletic Association coaches and our public safety, so our police and fire. It sounds like it's going to be a great time, and there are some opportunities, I think, even to win some, I'm looking at Susan Young, some cash and prizes and some fundraising. So, it sounds like a great night, and I hope everybody can go out there and cheer on our volunteers and our public safety staff. That's it.
Okay, well, thank you. Kathy?
Just a reminder, the senior center volunteer luncheon is this Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I know Mayor Bean and I are planning to attend, but others are welcome as well. And other than that, Ryan, great job with that meeting. It was very, very enlightening and informational, and I was really glad that I attended. Just some citizen communication, chief, some speeding concerns on 11th and Bay Drive area. Pretty, some pretty major, and running stop sign, the stop sign there, kind of near Belts, I think. Just an FYI for you, some complaints around speed on Highway 97, mostly between Harrow and Hilo, but some in, ongoing concerns with school starting now about the speed limit by the school area there. So, maybe, I don't know, some social media, something or another, you know, just reminding folks, school is starting and slow down. And then just continued really, really positive feedback on Arts in the Park. But I won't comment on the weather this time because I jinxed it last time, so...
You've had a tough time with Arts in the Park this year. Boy, Tuesday nights. Anyhow, thank you, Kathy. The last meeting I was at for this, the school board was a fairly short meeting, but the big item that they went through that night was a presentation on starting their strategic planning. So, they're getting geared up to do that, and they're going to be working on a five-year plan there also. So, and that's basically all I had, so... Anybody else, any questions, comments? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.